Good evening, everyone. We're going to get the meeting started. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundreden Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundreden County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Rarrenton Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as is shown on the agenda. Mrs. Pitzer, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney, Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg? Mr. Nichol? Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got correspondence received by the board as noted on the agenda, and with that, we'll move right into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes, and thank everyone for being here with us tonight. Tracy Giannatassio is a recent retired special education teacher here at Central, and she passed away earlier, well, at the end of last month, at the end of May. So Tracy touched a lot of lives here, and her loss has hit many folks very hard. So I'd just like to ask us to take a moment of silence for her memory and for all of those who are grieving her loss. We also remain extremely concerned about Jerry Walther, our ninth grader, who has been in the hospital since suffering terrible injuries from an accident at the very end of May. And so as a community, we join his family and friends in trying to remain Jerry-strong right now as he battles forward one small step at a time. So please keep him and his in your thoughts as well as we move through the end of the school year. Few items on the agenda tonight, just to point out, we have our normal discussion agenda tonight with a few items to move. There are organizational items there that, when we get to that section of the agenda, those do not need to be moved tonight. So they indicate that they're being moved tonight, but they're on the agenda for discussion. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware that the two agenda items, F1 and F2, are there just for discussion tonight. And we also have, at the end of my report, the regular HIBs and suspension report, and we have, let's see, do we have HIBs to move on tonight or not? Okay, I don't see them on the agenda. Okay, no worries. We are blessed tonight with a lot of guests who are here to receive some congratulations and for us to talk about some of the wonderful things that they've been doing this year. And so throughout the course of the year, we generally, you know, take some time here and there to invite some students up, and we got to the end of this year with so much wonderful things to celebrate, so many wonderful things to celebrate, that we thought we'd take some time tonight, our last workshop meeting of the school year, to just convey some congratulations and hear about all the wonderful things that everybody's doing. So I'm going to ask Mr. Brant to come up and get us kicked off.
First, I appreciate Dr. Moore you mentioning about Tracy G., Ms. G., recognizing her. And to give you a sense of just how incredible our students are here, that was a tough day finding that out. And I remember vividly later on that night, sitting at home, and I got an email from a student who happens to be a student who's here tonight, making sure that I got the link to her obituary because it had just come out. That was the touch that she had on the students here. So thank you very much for recognizing that tonight. This past year has definitely been a very interesting one, to say the least, but one where we kind of saw coming out of almost somewhat of a hibernation in the fall, little by little building momentum in the classroom, in our activities, in our athletics, building up to the point where this spring has been just one of the most amazing springs you'll ever see with what's taking place in the classroom, with our curricular programs, some of our programs that have competitions outside of school, with our extracurricular activities that also perform and have competitions outside of school and in our athletics. So I'm going to first introduce Jessica Cangelosie-Hade, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, who is going to introduce some of our curricular end of, some of the highlights of some of the amazing things our students have done here. And then when she's done, she'll pass it back to me, and we'll take a look at activities and athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Brant, and thank you to all of you for allowing us this opportunity to really recognize some of our award and achievement students who receive such honors. And I do want to say, we do not have everyone here tonight. Unfortunately, not everyone could be here, but we do want to recognize those who could come. So I'm going to start with our art department. We actually have, sorry, we actually have quite a few award winners in art, but tonight we're going to focus on the Ocean County Camera Club, which is a direct competition for the Photographic Society of America, and we have quite a few award winners, but I'd like to bring up Julia Duggan, Julia. And Julia is a winner for the judges' choice. She had a beautiful monorail photo. It is, I think, linked on our website, it's also on their website, and she will be pushed on to the Future Photographic Society of America's competition. So congratulations, Julia.
Everybody who comes up, you know, we'll give you applause, but make sure you turn around so the camera can see you as well and give a wave.
It's awkward, please. Good. Good. Okay. Thank you, Julia. It's awkward being the first one. Next, in our music department, and we do have some extracurricular awards that link to music, but specifically, we're in curriculum and instruction now, and there we'd like to honor All-State Choir. We have a few people, but we have with us tonight Madeline Carvajo. Madeline, could you come down? She is a soprano, too, for our All-State Choir, so congratulations. Thank you. And now I'm going to kick it over to our science department, and we have not participated in quite some time because they're virtual. We are now participating in the Chemistry Olympics, and so we have two gold medalists for Chemistry Olympics for their website design in chemistry and the presence of lead. It was very impressive what they put together. So I'd like to ask Elena Lua and Sonia Klein to come down so we can recognize you, please. Congratulations. You all get to go together. We'll clap again, it's a long walk. Thank you. And that is all of our academic award winners that are here this evening. But again, I do want to say congratulations to the students we invited that weren't able to make it. So congratulations and thank you again for your support. Going to kick it back to Mr. Brant now.
I'm just going to introduce now Jesse Spencer, our Supervisor of Athletics and Activities. And one thing I do want to mention, too, this spring, so Hundreden Central is part of the Hundreden Warren Sussex County group of schools that most of the spring sports have tournaments for a champion for those counties. And I believe this spring, for every sport that has that tournament, I think we swept the championships on all of them of the spring sports. So it's been an amazing, not any one All-Star here and there, but, and it's a recognition to not only the students themselves and the way they work together as teams, but also the coaches and advisors and all the assistants and the volunteers, and then also the parents having kids who went through years of dance and baseball and basketball. It's a lot of commuting back and forth, getting them to the places, so it takes a team right there. So congratulations to all of you, and I'm going to pass it on to Jesse Spencer now.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Brant. Thank you, Dr. Moore, Board of Education. This is such a great time of the year for us to be able to, you know, look at all the things that have happened over the course of the year and just be able to kind of wrap it all up, put it all together, and do some of the recognitions that, you know, our student athletes have been able to participate in over the course of the year. And although it's been, you know, extremely challenging along the way, I think that, you know, what we've learned over the course of this year, the perseverance, the commitment, the dedication, and the importance of what extracurricular clubs, activities, and, you know, athletics is in the lives of our student athletes and, you know, our students as a whole. So, you know, I've been blessed enough to be a part of it, and I can't thank enough to our advisors, our coaches, our administration, our board, and the support that we've gotten, you know, over the last couple of years to be able to continue a lot of the things that we've been able to do, and also bringing that all together, our community members and the way that we've all responded to give the experience to our students and the best possible scenario that we could give them. And so it's been tremendous. So, you know, without further ado, I would like to first start with some of our clubs and activities that we are involved in, and I'd first like to, you know, welcome our thespian group that's with us today, if you guys could just come up. And the first accomplishment was our New Jersey Governor's Award for the Best Scene, and the individuals here for that are Molly McGee, Haley Aider, Jenna Castellano. And Molly, Molly was also our Bucks County Student Theater Festival Best Actress, and Jessica Schuhart was the Bucks County Student Theater Festival Best Vocalist. Very good. Thank you very much, and congratulations to each and everyone, even on a successful year. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome up a couple of our members from our Speech and Debate Group, Perrin Araya and Soraya Narla, if you guys could come up. So Perrin was one first place in the Congress at the Freehold Township High School Tournament for Speech and Debate, so congratulations to you. And Soraya Narla, he was first place in the Student Congress at the ADFL Tournament. He was also the 2022 state champion in Congressional Debate at the NJSDL State Championship, and he has also received the Governor's Award in Arts Education as the state champion. They are members of our Speech and Debate Group. I would like to now welcome one of our members of our robotics team, Rock Gannon-Massetti. And Rock is the Dean's List semifinalist for the District Championship at Lehigh University for robotics. I would now like to welcome our two members of our esports group, if they would come So this past weekend, our robotics team competed in a three-person championship game, and our three members and our two are with us tonight, Austin Pinella and Andrew Rodriguez, and they are the Garden State Esports Rocket League champions, state champions. So congratulations to you guys. All right, now I'll shift a little bit to some of our athletic teams as well. And so I would first like to welcome our cheerleading representatives, Ms. Coach Del And our cheerleading team this past year won the UCA New Jersey State Championship for Cheerleading. Congratulations. A lot of our members are still on prom weekend and things like that, but I appreciate you guys coming out, and thank you very much, and congratulations. And our next one, our UDC Dance Team, if they could come up. And our Dance Team this year was the UDC New Jersey State Champions in Dance. They were the Varsity Jazz and Northeast Regional Champions as well. So congratulations to our Dance Team. All right. Next on our list is our Unified Basketball Team. You guys could come up. So I'll give you a little history, sorry not to take too much of your time, but a little bit of history, and I will recognize Mr. Rebholz because we both arrived here in 2018, and our Unified Sports was just getting kicked off and just starting to be recognized as an NJSIAA-recognized athletic sports through the New Jersey membership that we're a part of. And, you know, Mr. Rebholz and I kind of connected, and we came together, and it was something that he was passionate about at his previous district, it was something I was passionate about at the district that I was at before here. And, you know, coming that all together and the work that Mr. Rebholz was able to do to put some grant stuff together and kind of get the ball rolling with this, and I can't thank him enough for the reins that he took and us working well together, and we now recognize, you know, Unified Basketball and Unified Soccer. And it's just been a tremendous, tremendous addition and accomplishment from what we've seen. And we had a great run last year, you know, making it all the way to the finals of the Sec-, we call it the Sectional Championship. And this past season, we were able to, they were able to win the sectional tournament and compete at Rutgers University at the Rack in the Tournament of Champions against Moorestown, which was an unbelievable environment, unbelievable experience, and, you know, we came runners-up in that, but it was just an unbelievable experience for our student athletes, and it was an awesome thing to see. So, you know, Mr. Rebholz, if you would just recognize the few individuals that did attend tonight, and appreciate your efforts in making this work. So thanks.
And first of all, just to pile on the love for Tracy G., you will not find a bigger ambassador for our special ed program, Connect Club, Unified Sports, and everything that it stood for, and her impact on the program and the kids will be felt for years. And just to summarize the experience at Rutgers, after the game, a parent had come up to me and said, "I don't care if we lost by 40, I got to see my son hit a free throw on the big screen at the Rack." And I think that speaks to everything that they do. Major thank you to Jesse, and on behalf of Coach Rich Minacio and Nicole Seitz, I want to honor some of the athletes. We have Mac Malley, Zach Brent, Derek Weisch, and Luke Miller.
All right, and our last team that we've been recognizing tonight is our Boys Golf This has been a tremendous year for our Boys Golf Team. I've been around sports quite a long time, and, you know, the things that they were able to accomplish, you know, not only as individuals but as a team, is just something that has been tremendous to watch. It's been tremendous in the conversations I've had with our coaching staff, and, you know, just everything and all the pieces that had to fall into place battling, you know, our tough spring through weather and, you know, different elements that they had to fight through, you know, kind of the shift in the team and who's in, who's out, who's, you know, what five you're taking today, what four we take at the end, and, you know, all these things that go into a game that is really such an individual game, but at the end of the day, it's such a huge team accomplishment. And those are things that, you know, are really, really are exciting to watch, and the experiences they have, not only supporting their peers as individuals, but at the end of the day, they come together and they're the biggest team of supporters for each other that I've seen. So it's been just a tremendous year for them, starting off, they won the Red Devils Tournament, they also won the Hundreden County Tournament, they were the Hundreden Warren Sussex Tournament Champions, the Skyland Conference Tournament Champions, Skyland Conference Divisional Champions, and they are the 2022 Group Four State Champions. And on top of that, they had an undefeated season, hadn't lost a match, and the best part of the deal is that we get them all back. So it's good. So just a fantastic, fantastic group. So I'm going to invite them up, and I'm also going to invite our coach, Mr. Gackos, to also just introduce the members of the team.
Before I begin, I'd like to invite my wife up, Frances, who is a big part of our Frances stood here like I did tonight, not too many years ago, with her state championship team, so I'm glad we're able to return the favor. I just want to thank Madam President, Distinguished Board of Education members, Superintendent Dr. Moore, Principal Brant, and Athletic Director Jesse Spencer, for the opportunity that you've given us and the cooperation for us to succeed. It is well noted. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the parents here tonight. Without parents like this, we wouldn't be able to succeed. How many times have these parents have washed these guys jerseys? Listened to the bad scores they may have had or the good scores they've had. It takes a lot of pressure off my wife and I during the season, and we thank the parents. Thank you very much. And before I introduce the team to you, I'd like to thank the team because it is a privilege, my wife and I, to coach you, so thank you very much. Ninth grade, Yadav Mahandran. Tenth grade, Trent Fisher. Thomas Brunetti. Zachary Fisher. And Alex Young. Alex Young made second team All-State. As important, he was the Player of the Year in Hundreden County. It's pretty cool. Grade 11, Tyler Frankfurt. Jeffrey Young. And Isaiah Williams. Isaiah made second team All-State. Pretty cool. Before I introduce the last two, there's two members tonight who are not here. They had a prom weekend, and I think they're still enjoying it. John Wagner and Stephen Marlin. I'd like to bring up my two captains who led the way this year, Gray Keppich and Ryan This is your 2022 Group Four State Champions.
Thank you very much again for allowing us a couple minutes to recognize our student athletes and our clubs and activities and all the accomplishments that they were able to accomplish this year. And just came from our baseball game, who also just won their semifinal, so they will play in the Group Four State Championship on Saturday at 1 o'clock at Veterans Park in Hamilton. So we're looking forward, and hopefully we'll bring one more to you. So good luck to them. Now I'll just turn it back over to Mr. Brant real quick, and thank you very much.
If you don't mind, a quick closing comment real quick. Two things, if you don't mind. I want to share, on behalf of the senior class, a compliment that was made to me this past Friday night. We just had our prom. Over 630 of our students came to it, which was fantastic. And at the end of the night, the head of security of that place approached, and we were just kind of chit-chatting on how they felt it went, and they said, and I mentioned this in an email to the students the other day, not only were they incredibly respectful and pleasant to be with, but they seemed to have genuinely the most fun that they saw of any group this spring in the prom. Just genuine fun, and it was awesome. And I bring that up, too, because being a sports nut and activities nut myself, sometimes we can get a little too tight about competition for that. And one, I guess, benefit coming out of the pandemic was I genuinely believe that the students realized how much they enjoyed being a part of what they are a part of, no matter what the activity is. And the joy to watch them perform, compete, and just have fun doing it has been pleasant all year. So I congratulate them all, and I thank them, too, for sharing that joy throughout the year. So, you know, we can take a minute to let folks...
All right. Just echoing something that Mr. Brent shared, too, about the importance of our, our sports and activities. And I want to thank Mr. Spencer, Mr. Brant, and, and all the folks who are involved in all of those operations. We, we gained, and we, I guess we learned something we already knew, which is the importance of those kinds of activities to our students as, as anchors into the community, especially throughout a time when we were looking for connections back into our community. So I'm thinking of 2021, as we were hybrid and virtual at different times and all of that. It was, it became such an incredible priority for us to make sure that we offered as much as we could in terms of those activities, that we completed our seasons and really proud of the track record and all of the, the steps that everyone took to ensure that we had full seasons and that everybody could connect in that way. So I'm just really appreciative for all of that. On the 8th, the other night, we celebrated all of our scholarship and academic award winners from the Class of 2022. So I urge you to take a look at, Tap Into has an article near the top of their feed on all of that. Just incredible array of, of talent and passion and dedication on display by our students here at Central. Wonderful community, wonderful in the ways that they support each other through, through good times and bad, and, and just, you know, continue to, to make us proud. Incredible. Can't wait for graduation next week, although that's always a sad moment, too, saying goodbyes to some folks. Let's see, so you covered the baseball thing. That's good. I was going to mention that tonight. And we've got the prom compliment. I wanted to make sure we shared tonight as well. Thank you, Mr. Brant. I do have to, with apologies, there's a, there is a motion that we need to make at the end of my report here tonight. So I'm going to read it in, if that's okay. And I don't know if it fell off at the end of this long HIB report or not, but we do have some HIBs that we're recommending, HIB cases that we're recommending the board to affirm. So the, the motion reads, move to affirm the Hundredan Central Regional High School District's administrative disposition for the following HIB cases reviewed in closed session on May 23rd, 2022. And those are HIBs 49, 50, 51, and 52. So we do need a vote on that tonight, with apologies for that not being on the agenda in print, but we'll, we'll get it into the minutes, certainly. And with that, and with gratitude to just everyone's accomplishments here tonight and the ability and the, the opportunity to share all that with you, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So can I have a motion, please, to affirm HIBs 49, 50, 51, 52?
Come on.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we're going to move into our first residence forum for items that are on the agenda for action only. Okay, seeing that nobody is looking to speak on action items, we'll move on to our organizational items. Dr. Moore, do you want to speak to the calendar?
Yes, so on our organizational items, we have two items that do not need to be moved tonight. So I'd like to amend those so that they just indicate for discussion tonight. So one is our appointing two additional officials, an anti-bullying, well, two, two categories of officials, anti-bullying specialists, and then our children and court advisory committee liaisons. So those can move on the 20th. And likewise, too, we have a, a resolution to adopt laying out a board meeting calendar for July through, really as long as we can take it, right? January at the earliest, or latest, rather. So we have some discussion here to have, just to firm up dates for July and August, and to give us some direction on setting up a calendar for moving into the school year, September through January at least. And then pending our retreat at the end of the summer, we, we may add additional meetings based on the outcomes of our discussions then, but we, we need to approve a calendar now of meetings, at least to, to take us through the fall and the winter.
So I'd like to propose, we have a meeting on July 18th and a meeting on August 22nd. Those will be our July and August meetings. And at, at the end of August, we'll have our retreat, and we can talk about our schedule moving forward. So our suggestion is that we do one meeting a month for the time being, get that on the calendar through the end of the year, and then if something comes out of retreat at the end of August, we could always amend that to add in the second workshop meeting. Anybody have any discussion about that, or concerns, questions? No? Okay.
All right. So nothing to move on that tonight, but we'll prepare that for motion for next week. So if I heard that, we're the 18th, the 22nd, and then one per month, we can work on our regular, was it?
29th and 30th.
Yeah, I don't think we have times yet.
No, probably in the evening, but 29th and 30th, it's a Monday and Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll all move into committee reports. Did I miss anything? Good. Mr. Richard, do you have student life and program?
Student Life and Program Committee, that a week ago. We have one item to move tonight for approval, and that concerns the graduate work for Mr. Twizzler, who presented his doctoral research proposal on the correlation between math and music. He shared that he added a focus in music when he came from his prior district and took on music as a department. It's not working? Okay. And Mr. Twizzler will investigate the participation in music coursework and its correlation to high-stakes testing achievement. The student data used will be de-identified. So we'll hold that to move at the end of the presentation. Other items for discussion. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde reviewed the tuition and transportation agreements for the students as listed on the agenda. All but one of the student agreements listed are continued services for the special ed students. One tuition and transportation agreement is a continued placement for a student new to the district. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde reviewed the revised tuition and transportation agreement. The tuition amount was revised based on a change in the student's IEP. These policies, this is policies for second reading, were reviewed during first read in May of this past month and are up for second reading this month. And they are shown as listed on the agenda, involving postnatal accommodation for students, pupil intervention and referral services, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, emergency and crisis situations, and cooperation with law enforcement agencies. Then we have a first reading of Policy 2411, which deals with counseling services. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde explained that the last part of the counseling committee's work involved completing the draft of the revised policy. Dr. Webb and Dr. Zurwicky discussed the feedback from the counselors and the policy. Dr. Moore spoke about the statements in the accountability section of the policy. The committee discussed the length of time for revisiting the policy, for example, every three years. And Mrs. Hughes suggested summarizing the work the committee has done. The committee discussed measuring goal setting and data. One board member noted that an important metric was the number of interactions a student has with a counselor. We also asked about an exit survey to gain student input. And Dr. Zurwicky noted that the seniors already completed a graduation survey, but that counseling could add questions to align to measuring the data in the policy. Mrs. Kellogg asked about repeating the survey to gain more measurable longitudinal data. The staff evaluation instruments, evaluation instruments need to be approved on an annual basis. And we have worked on, on modifying the, which one do we use again? The Danielson Framework. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde also provided information at the committee about the continued work of the District Evaluation Advisory Committee regarding this framework. Once the committee finalizes their revisions to the framework, it will be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Ed for their review and approval. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde provided information about the Memorandum of Understanding with Rider University. This agreement enables qualified students in the high school introduction to education course to earn college credits from Rider for their, for this course. This agreement must be updated and approved annually. Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde also reviewed the proposed in-service agreement with Drew University to provide professional development through the National Writing Project. The district is proposing to continue with Drew as a professional development provider. Mr. Brant reviewed the application for a new club, the Baking Club. Sounds good. And Mr. Brant reviewed the dance team's trip to Spooky Nook, Sports Complex, Complex in Manheim, Pennsylvania. This is an annual trip where they focus on their choreography. Finally, we have information on foreign exchange students, kind of exciting, post-COVID. We're actually hoping to host students from countries like Germany, Denmark, Italy, Spain, and Brazil. Sounds like the World Cup. And hopefully, this will, this will come to fruition moving forward. So with that is the report from the Student Life Committee. I have one item to move for approval tonight, and that is Item 1, the staff research approval for Mr. Twizzler.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler, can you give us an update on O and T, please?
Yes, it's going to be a little while. We have a lot of items. But I will caution that we are only looking to move the first four. The rest are all informational for next week. So I'll go rather quick through the, the last number. But for the first four, we have a resolution to reinstate the Qualified Retirement Plan. I believe it's a three-year plan, and it's up this year, so we're reinstating that. We have a change order to reduce a project contingency for the IMC of $25,168. We have a capital reserve adjustment of $61.36, just some money that kind of shook out while we were adjusting books. And finally, the last one to move is a fiber network project bid that we're awarding in the amount of $65,248.78. This is fiber running to the Business Administration Office, where we have some infrastructure and continues to be part of our business continuity plan. It also helps with insurance rates as far as technology goes. I'll run through the, the next, I think it's like 20 or 19 rather quickly. Again, they're only for review for next week, so we'll have our Treasurers report. We will be approving any invoices that come in, transfers, policies. Right now, we have second reading for maintenance and repair policy, and who's allowed to do that. Once we get the numbers, we'll be looking to authorize the IDEA Act for fiscal year 2023. And then we get into a whole bunch of transportation and bus rates. So we have all of the runs for next year's buses, their total cost that we expect them to, to cost to, to school. We have medical transport rates for any students that need medical transport, home-to-school contracted rates, once we award any bids that do come in, voluntary subscription bus option rates, second seat rates, if you want to have a second ride, a second run route, approving the JTC or Joint Transportation Resolution Agreement for our joint transportation with Flemington Raritan, approving the parental transportation agreement for 2022, '23 new school year. And then any adjustments, now that we're out of buses, to health insurance policies and the rates that are going to be changing. We have all policy coverages for various insurance and other policies for 2022, '23 school year, any outstanding checks, optional parent-paid electronic device insurance plan. So this is if you want to have protection on the Chromebooks. Line budget amounts of up to $6 million in capital reserve for long-range facility programs. And approving a number of resolutions here, again, for your review. I'm not going to read them all off. Sorry, two more. We'll be approving the rate for the medical inspector to Elizabeth Raleigh. And finally, all of the following contracts for the Board of Education that we need to approve for next year, and the contractors that we'll use. So our normal list. So again, only moving the first four of those. Sorry if I put you to sleep on the other 19. Yes, Mr. Richard?
Sorry, it didn't get, so 23 we'll, we'll ask to move as well tonight, it just didn't get a shovel up to the top.
Oh, we are moving that tonight?
Yeah, so number 23, School Medical Inspector. Yeah, we would like to move tonight as well, if we can.
All right. So, motion to move and approve Items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 23.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, can we have an update on personnel, please?
Yes, we have a lot of items on the list tonight, but only a relatively small part of them is going to be approved. So, starting with first item, retirements, we have three, a bus driver, a teacher, and a custodian. We have resignations. We have four, unaffiliated administrative non-tenured to approve those contracts. Heather Spitzer, rather important person. Heather, BA. And then contractual appointments, other contractual appointments, a bus driver. And we have appointments per diem. One, two, three, four of those, teen prep training kind of appointments. And that's about it for the moved items, which I'll return to again and, and move those items. For approval, we have special services, summer nurse work. And then we move on with professional development and educators workshop attendees, which accounts for many pages in your printed agenda, if you've got it, because a lot of people are attending these work sessions. There is a sidebar, which we are moving to approve tonight, which is an inclusion of the dean of students in the, in the positions listed that are, that are part of the negotiations with the Administrator Association. But this new position is an administrator and needs to be added to that list. All right. Advisors, Schedule 13, we're approving a whole lot of advisors. And we, it's 61 of them, in fact. Coaches, the same thing, we are approving them. Next year appointments, hourly, for candidates like ESY student workers. 16 is a leave of absence for four people. ELL intake testing, candidates for that. And then there's a whole, a number of people doing summer curriculum work. Number of pages of that, which we're very happy that all, so many people are being active in the summer for our students, and we're spec, and a summer IEP meeting authorization for special services. Proctors, monitors, and test coordinators for the district being approved, up for improvement, approving. Second reading of the policy, our policy that's being second read is examination for cause. There are two adjacent policies on that. More summer activities, which turn out to be More summer activities, which turn out to be things like summer institute and summer school instructors. 10 of those are being approved for the work. Summer Academy, ELL instructors. Summer Bridge Program instructors. Summer Aspire Credit Completion instructors. This is the whole series of staffs in different positions to get us working this summer. ESY teachers, prior professional speech therapists, behaviorists, and nurse for summer employment. And let's see, Special Services Summer Work. Finally, on Item 28, we're abolishing some positions. These are positions that are no longer active because the people, when they were transferred to new positions, which were established and previously passed by the Board, and now these are kind of dead positions. They're sitting there without people in them, and so we're cleaning up the list and we're eliminating them. And we're creating a new position, Board Certified Behavior Analyst. And that will be, again, approved tonight, but not moved. And that is number 29. You have any comment on that, the behaviorist, Dr. Moore, new position?
So, a couple of things. Our BCBA's develop behavioral plans for students who need them, both in special ed and general ed. And we have one, which puts us kind of well behind other schools who have similar programs as ours. Adding an additional one, we went back and forth quite a bit on, you know, what exact position we needed to put in in order to support the growth of our programs, and we landed on this as the best next step in special education to ensure that our kids, as we expand Aspire and some other programs, have access to behavioral planning with that credentialed specialist. So that's a person who's hired on the same teacher scale. You know, it's on the teaching scale.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'd like to move Personnel Items 1 through 7 and 9 through 12.
Yeah, I think we're just 1 through 7, right? 1 through 7 are the only ones that we absolutely need to move tonight if the Board would like to.
Yeah, but the...
Yeah, and the 11, the sidebar can...
Yeah, they show on this to move on the comment. So that's why.
Yeah, let's move the sidebars. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to move 1, I, 1 through 7, and 11. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bless you. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the sidebar for the Dean of Students. Dr. Moore, could you elucidate what the role of that Dean of Students is going to be?
So the Dean of Students position, and the Board approved a job description for that position at a prior meeting. What we're doing there is taking the current Dean of Students position, which had been held by Mr. Brand before he moved into the Principal's Office, and refashioning it to align closer to our various policies, most notably the equity policy that's on for discussion and then first read on the 20th. So that individual who will be a member of the HCAA, so they'll be positioned in the organization at the same level as a vice principal or supervisor, that individual would be spearheading work with other staff members on equity and also working to help expand some of our other alternative programs, also help oversee our various clubs and activities, especially where they intersect with some of those duties, so our affinity groups and others. So the skills that the successful candidate brings to the table will help to find that certainly a little bit more, but we're looking forward to bringing that position on. The state has made mention of requiring a position devoted to equity, and several districts have moved forward with that, but they haven't given us many details about what they would require or any information about any required certification. But we do feel confident moving forward with this level of position to meet whatever requirements the state might put.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, do you have an update for the Racism Equity Diversity Committee?
Yes. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge Happy Pride Month. You know, this is a good month for moving this policy, where we celebrate the affirmation, dignity, equality, increased visibility of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender community. Also this month, I'm not... Again. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so Happy Pride Month. And tonight, we get to move after a lot of work and communication and really collaboration from students and community members. Really happy, Dr. Moore, to move for the first reading tonight, the CARES policy.
Yeah, so we're not moving for vote tonight? We'll vote on the 20th.
Right.
But bringing it up for discussion tonight in case there's any more Board feedback.
Just bringing it up. And if anyone has any feedback, there was one part that we wanted to address under curricular, extracurricular, and support programs. Some of us were talking a little bit about some language there, where we talk about increased opportunities and removing barriers that we might want to include and validate technical, vocational, trade opportunities. And I hesitate to call them non-academic, because that sort of puts them in relation to academia. But we would like to find some way to include and validate those choices in that segment there. So if anyone has any feedback or ideas for that, they'd be welcome.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments? I would like to just acknowledge, which I neglected to do, with the counseling policy, the committees who worked on both policies. So I'll start with counseling, since I neglected to do so. I want to thank all the counselors who took part in that committee. Dr. Moore, Dr. Webb. Is Danielle a doctor now?
Yes, Danielle.
Okay, doctors are Wiki. I didn't want to give her her proper title. That was well earned. And myself, with myself, Ms. Kellogg, who's not here tonight from the Board. A lot of hard work put in, a really good policy came out of it. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledged that Counseling Committee. And similarly, the Equity Committee, lots of great staff, Mr. Richard, Mrs. O'Donnell, myself sat on that, and the kids. Once again, amazed by some of our students. The students who took part in that policy work gave us perspectives and ideas that we would have never came up with on our own. So I just want to make sure that everyone realizes how much the Board appreciates all the work that was done on both of those policies.
Yeah, and if I could add, it's the students that named it. So, big thank you to them.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work of students, the cooperation of the Boards on sort of a unique policy process. We're used to sort of developing policy, working with our vendors on some options in those policies, but these are, both of these policies, the Counseling and the Equity Policy, written from the ground up by our Board, with our students, with our staff, and now presented to the public for thoughts as we move toward approval over the next two months. Now, so Mrs. O'Donnell, you're mentioning in the Curricular, Extracurricular, and Support Program section, right? The second bullet sort of ends on the note of including higher-level coursework. Is that the area that you're talking about, potentially broadening the language to include not just higher-level coursework, but a broader array of opportunities for learning?
Yes, thank you.
So if there's thoughts about any language off the top of our heads now, we can maybe zero in on some ideas now. But if not, we can certainly come to the table on the 20th with something worked out there for the Board's consideration, unless folks like it just the way it is.
Okay, any other discussion? With that, I'm going to conclude committee reports. Before we move on to the second residence forum, we have additional Board business. I have an update that I'd like to give concerning the May 16 incident, which will also be circulated to the central community later tonight, tomorrow, at some point. So this will go out also in writing. At the May 23 Board of Education meeting, Dr. Moore presented information regarding the May 16 incident involving an unsanctioned student demonstration on campus. The recording of that presentation can be found under Agendas, Minutes, and Recordings on the Board of Education webpage of the Hunderd and Central website. This Board called a special meeting on Wednesday, June 1, to gather further information about the May 16 incident. The majority of that meeting took place in executive session due to the confidential nature of the topics discussed, including district security measures, which must remain confidential in order to be effective. At that time, the Board was provided full access to all campus security footage, as well as was provided additional confidential details of what transpired on that date. The Board is confident that it has been provided with all relevant facts and information, which administration was in possession of leading up to May 16 and thereafter. We believe that the administration and staff handled the situation in a reasonable manner that was consistent with what was successful in the past, with the assistance and guidance of the Raritan Township Police Department. We do, however, recognize that there were misjudgments related to the scope of the demonstration and/or the potential for a counter-demonstration, along with staff's ability to respond to and manage a gathering of this nature. We also acknowledge that communications before and after the event were not robust enough to dissuade students from engaging in the type of behavior that we saw and to alert parents to the possibility of a disruption on campus. Moving forward, there is clearly work to be done on various fronts to ensure that an incident like this never occurs again. That work may include, amongst other things, creating a regulation to follow our Policy 5520, which lays out specific detailed guidelines, expectations, and consequences in the event that student demonstrations are prevented on campus in the future. Working collectively and collaboratively with law enforcement and outside security and safety consultants to review and update our school's security plan based on lessons learned from this incident, and to better define the respective roles of law enforcement and school staff when responding to incidents on campus or those involving students. Requiring administration and other staff to engage in training and other professional development on crisis communication, de-escalation techniques, and protocols for informing students and parents of potential disruptions on campus. The Board will continue to discuss these lessons and our next steps, as well as additional information as it becomes available and when appropriate. As we continue to work to understand and learn from this incident, we are committed to keeping the public informed on everything that we are legally and ethically able to share. With that, we will move into our second residence forum. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I should ask if anybody else has additional business. Anyone have any comments before we move on? So we'll move into our second residence forum. Same rules as always, a maximum of 30 minutes, five minutes per person. If you're interested in speaking, please come to the mic, state your name and municipality, and note it on the paper, which I hope is at the podium.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bargers. I'm a longtime resident of Flemington. Two things I'd like to address tonight are the Diversity and Inclusion Law and the Sexual Standards. As we look at, first of all, before I get into it, diversity and inclusion is very important. And I think what we saw tonight in the sports, in the theater, in the, all the activities within students, that is really what diversity is about, and that is really what America's about. So I congratulate you on that. On the Diversity and Inclusion Law, there are a couple of things that come into it. Basically, if you ever read it, it's very open. The Board came back from the state, came back and said, here are some of the mandates. They said that all lesson plans will include diversity and inclusion, and that the all schools would have to accept the pronoun that a student wanted to have, regardless of what they wanted to, but they didn't have to inform the parent. On the first one, where a student comes to this Board and says, I want to have a pronoun, I would ask that the Board and the superintendent make it a matter of policy that under 18, they would inform the parent that this is going on and involved in the process. And I would ask them to make a policy that this has, and they do have the open to do that. On the second part of lesson plans, I've worked with organizations like Garden State and others, and they pulled together lesson plans. Some say things like, diversity is really important. You need to understand that all people equal and all views matter, and that's a good thing to have. Other ones said, the lesson plan is to attack male toxicity and promote gender fluidity. Those are two different things. Under this, I would ask that the Board and the education come out, that make all lesson plans publicly available without going through the Oprah process, and that anybody can see what's going on in their teaching and going on. That would be a good group between the Board and the parents. Moving on into the sexual standards. If you see the sexual standards that came out, you've got to be a little bit concerned. You've got to look at things when they talk at certain young ages, talking about anal sex and that type of thing. Now, there is an opportunity to opt out, okay? And that's great, and that should be done. But I would ask that the Board and the superintendent open up the opportunity, rather than opt out, to opt in. That would take a positive affluence to say, I'm going to join the course. And people under 18, that their parents would be able to do it. If they didn't do that, at least make a positive affirmation that they make the check mark they went in the course or out of the course. The things that go on, it said, these things are such new, and so really controversial, to have them, that they have to opt out, is just really unfair. So I would consider that. And then finally, one of the things that are going on, many things that go on about religion and school and separation of state. In the Constitution, it says that the government should not force a state, basically, of a religion on a state, and that's great. When you look at the tenets of religion, whether it's Catholicism, Judaism, Zauism, those type of things, there are basic tenets. New religions like Scientology have met those standards, and they have been teneted, where the guy that started was basically into mind and how people work, not a religion. But when you look at the tenets, they call it a religion. Secularism has all the tenets of religion, and that's fine to have a religion. So when you have in secularism, things like gender is fluid, that's right to be taught. But you cannot force the things like gender to be fluid on people of Christianity, or Judaism, or Islam, that believe that there are two genders. So I think you need to figure out a way to come back and refrain, and come back and say, that's a religion, we're not going to support it, it's all open, and people have to do it. I think it's really important that the Board engage in it in these unbelievable crazy times. And I would ask that you do, if not the next session, come back with those policies the following sessions from there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Vernon Williams. I live in Raritan Township. And I just wanted to stand and commend you, the Board, for your efforts and for all that you are doing to ensure that diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is a part of what you do here at Central. And so I am grateful that you have aptly named your equity and respect policy CARE. Central advocates respect and equity. And so I am appreciative that you are concerned about each and every student to ensure that each and every student is valued, belongs, and feels welcome here in this environment. So I wanted to stand to let you know that you have many in the community who are behind you in the effort that you are doing, and that we advocate you to continue to move forward, and we look to work with you as you continue to work on the policy for race and equity. And as a Christian, I do not, my son comes to this school, and because you affirm those who are LGBTQ, will never feel that it's forced upon him. That's not who he is, but he does not reject others who feel... That's not who he is, but he does not reject others who feel, who are who they are. And so as a Christian, I do not believe that you are teaching or forcing gender issues on our teens, but allowing them to declare who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Vernon Williams.
All right, good evening. Kevin Ostrander, East Amwell Township. Like last time, let me just see if I can remove this, it's better. And much like the last gentleman, my daughter attended school here up and through about the third week in February, we also had removed her. And my wife and I are strong Christians, and we didn't have the ability to opt out. So the problem I had is a lot of the LGBTQ community curriculum is actually going well beyond health, so well, I didn't have the option to option out my daughter or opt her out. She spent three months in an English program, talking about Matthew Shepard, what happened to Matthew Shepard was an awful situation. But she spent three months on that topic. It was ridiculous. It was excessive. So we made the choice, much like Vernon just mentioned, where we're just going to basically have her schooled elsewhere, and quite frankly, she's learned a lot more in the last few months doing that than she was here. Although we respect other lifestyles, we don't force them on our children. Again, we respect and tolerate. So why I'm here tonight is actually for 8100. I'm not going to get into the details of it, I guess I have a fundamental issue. I like the, the language that's in it, I think everybody feels comfortable when they see, you're removing a bias, trying to even things out, equity, I understand all of that, and everybody of course aspires to that. The problem I have is I saw what happened on May 16th, I saw the assault on a young student at this school. I listened to testimony after that from other students that came forward, parents of students that came forward, basically saying, this is not a safe environment here at this school. And we heard that from one young woman who said she was being stalked and bullied, talked to several members of the administration, yet nothing to her satisfaction had been done. So I guess my point to you is, it's great to roll out another policy, but it looks like some of your basic policies don't seem to be working very well. I do commend you on the fact that you gave us an update tonight, and certainly that's appreciated, but more work needs to be done there. It seems to me that you can look at some of your policies and perhaps do some modification. Quite frankly, I think some of your policies already cross into 8100. I mean, they should be able to be addressed elsewhere, but again, there may be some nuances here that are completely fresh, and I respect that. But again, you know, I think of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you're not meeting some basic needs of these students right now. Academics, someone mentioned at the last meeting, internationally, the US is ranked 25th when it comes to math, science, and reading, and it's trending in a negative direction. And that's 2018 data. Wait until we see some data after COVID lockdowns, it's only going to get worse. We do need to get back to the academics. Tonight, what happened here was fantastic. Love to see the commendations for these students and what they've achieved. It was a great diverse group here, and fantastic accomplishments, and of course, we're happy about that. But again, it comes down to the fact that, again, I don't feel like there's complete prioritization here. There's some basic needs that need to be met, safety being one of them, it's not being fully addressed. I understand you're working on it, Ms. Hughes and others, but that needs to be resolved before we can continue on, because I feel like some of these policies, this reads to me more like a manifesto than a policy, because I don't really know how you're going to implement this. I mean, it'd be interesting to see that next layer down of what the procedures really are. This is more like just a very broad mission statement, I'm not against it, but I just don't know if it's window dressing, or if it's really going to happen, much like some of the other policies. So again, just some food for thought, and as we think about the culture here at the school, some of that may be reflected at the, at the faculty and staff level. It's not just about the students and what we can do there, it's also what we can do at the highest level. That starts at the top and goes all the way down. I'm a top-down kind of guy, not a bottom-up type person. So again, just some food for thought for you moving forward. Appreciate the time to speak to you, and again, enjoyed some of the accomplishments this evening, it was a nice, refreshing change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ostrander.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Bokage, I'm a resident of Flemington, mother of three and grandmother of five children in, in this Flemington borough, or actually Raritan Township. I just wanted to note some things that I have questions about as I look over some of the agenda. I noticed that under the harassment, intimidation, and bullying issues, or I should say incidents for May, the number was 28. It looks like that was the second highest in 11 months, with 32 being in February. And we know that May was the protest incident, and I have a concern about that, or also maybe a question. The last we had heard at the last meeting was that there were seven suspensions, and seven, I believe, what's, what is it, seven suspensions and seven detentions, right? So I was just wondering how many of those 28 were tied with the protest. I'm a little concerned about that, just because I appreciate that you all, after the last meeting, were looking at the footage and everything. I also have looked at the footage, probably not all that you have, because you had the security at the school. But from what I see is well over 50 or more students who were certainly aggressively harassing, intimidating, and bullying. And as we look through, Dr. Moore, on the May 23rd, you had stated that you recognize students' rights to expression, and aligns consequences for any disruption, disruption to our code of conduct with consequences. And my concern is with consequences for the students, because that is huge. We talk a lot, or you had talked a lot about safety and security and all that, but students need to be held accountable for their behavior, and that is a concern that I have. I'm a great proponent of mercy and forgiveness. I don't know if any of these students have apologized or sorrow for, for what they did, that's their own heart issue, and we can't orchestrate that, we can't force that, you know? But my concern is, is with the consequences of these students, because certainly to avoid this kind of thing in the future, there have got to be consequences that, for these students. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Rizza, I'm from Reddington Township. Similar to a couple of the other speakers, I want to talk about policy 8100. About a month or so ago, when this was first brought up with a draft, I looked at the policy and had some questions, and Superintendent Moore suggested that we go to the website, because there is a presentation on it from April of 2021 about equity, racism, and diversity. So based on his recommendation, I decided to read it, because I was driving some of the policy decisions in the word. So one of the things I do want to commend is something that you guys said, that the students are involved in policy writing, so in general, that's a great direction, so I appreciate that you guys are doing that. And hearing our input as well before you vote on it, it's very important as well. But one of the things I noticed about the policy is that it utilizes percentages instead of numbers, and whenever you have data tables with pure percentages without an N, it could be extremely misleading, and in fact, it can almost be meaningless if the N is too small. So every table on every page of the report, every chart, just has a percentage. So percentage of what? So I'll just give you an example. And the reason I'm going to talk about is the disciplines, as I brought up last time, and that's what you directed me to, so I'm just going to focus on that part of the report. So one of the things is, there's 2,500 students at Central, and let's just say the incidence went from one to two in a year. That'd be fantastic, two incidents went from one to two, you guys would be applauded, and you wouldn't need to write a policy. But if you look at it from percentages, that's a 100% increase. So if I looked at that, and I just had 100% in that table for that group, I'd be like, oh my God, we got massive problems at Central, it's 100% increase. Not really, it's only two incidents. So the N's the most important thing, and every intro to the statistics talks about having too small of an N, and just using percentages could completely distort anything. So I just want to make sure that when you look at this, you look at it from a holistic perspective. Then the other thing I found is that the data is kind of old, some of it's from 2018, 2019, some from 2020, 2021. I assume it's because of COVID, you don't have recent data, plus the report was written in April 2021. So this also cuts down to where the N's important. So I'll give you an example. You talk about the, the group that Dr. Moore mentioned when I spoke last time, he said that there was, or he mentioned, as I read the report, that there's 3.2% of the student population is this one group, and that they have 5.4% of the tier-one interactions. Okay, 3.2 versus 5.4 is a decent increase, but without knowing the number of infractions, you don't know if that's good or bad. If it's only 100 students, to go from 3.2 to 5.4 is meaningless, it's like the example I gave you before, you should be applauded, no actions are needed. So from percentage perspective, that's meaningless, so that whole section, and almost every data point is the same way. And then another thing to notice, if the N is low, and this data for that, it was from 2018, those students could have graduated already, they may not even be in this school. So let's just say it was 100 students, because you don't say how many are in the report, they may not even be there, and those five students could be in college somewhere right now, or unemployed. So using old data with no actual numbers to draw conclusions, to write actions that you're going to try and enforce. The other thing I want to mention is, for example, if you wanted to get a realistic number, you need to know the number of fractions. If it's 100, it's meaningless, if it's 300, still meaningless, because percentages are so low. But if you had, let's say, 500 students with this infractions, they could almost say, okay, 2.6, or 3.2 versus 5.6, yeah, that's a big deal. But if you had that many infractions, that'd be an indication of the school. Why do you have that many people with tier-one infractions? Are people really that late to school? So then it's more about, why do you have so many? So my whole point is, this report, without any of the actual numbers, is really meaningless to make in the decision. I know you guys are voting on it in the next Board of Education meeting, but before you vote on it, or to Kevin's point, maybe deprioritize it to a later meeting, could you go to the report? You must have the data, because you have percentages, you have the percentages, you have the underlying numbers, and just add on to the bottom, put an appendix on to it. Say, for Table 1, here's the actual numbers, for Table 2, here's the actual numbers. It should be an easy lift, because you have the data, and then we'll be able to inform, and then from the Board of Education, when you vote on it, you could say, wow, it was only five students, you know what, they may not even be in school anymore. Or maybe it was 50 students, it's like, wow, that's a big deal, we should take a look at it. So it was really hard for you guys to make a decision without knowing the actual numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizza. Okay, so we're at 8:24, 8:34 will be 30 minutes, so that'll allow for two more speakers.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Peterson, I am a Raritan Township parent. I actually don't have any kids in the school as of yet, I will in the fall, and so, looking over the hill, as they say, there were just a couple of things that, that kind of jumped out at me in that new policy you have. One is what type of restorative justice, because restorative justice has a very broad meaning. There's been a lot of instances where it works very well at elementary and middle school levels, but a lot of what has been coming out over the past decade almost, is that, especially at the high school level, it leads to, if the teachers are the ones having to do the restorative justice within the classroom, it leads to a lot of issues for the other kids just trying to learn. It leads to greater incidence of violence, because kids feel that they have no repercussions. And, and I would urge you to be more specific in what you are considering to be restorative justice, because that is, like I said, a very broad topic, and how exactly that would be implemented. In a school this size, especially, you know, how, how would that come down? I know you're planning on hiring a new administrator for that, but, but what exactly would that be talking about? Because there's a lot of ways that when implemented incorrectly, it can go horribly wrong, and the Parkland shooting was one of those instances where restorative justice went horribly wrong. So I think that it really needs to be taken very seriously and be a little bit more specific. So I would ask you to do that, because I know that our kids' safety is, you know, the number one thing. And the other thing I was just going to say is, there are a lot of focuses on the topics of the day. But I think we also need to really look at the topic of the day being that these kids are going to come out into a world that is very different than the ones even two years ago, three years ago. We're looking at a recession, we're looking at possibly a depression. These kids are going to need to be able to come out of school and be ready to jump into the workforce if they have the opportunity, or be able to get by. Do they know how to, you know, take care of themselves? Are they going to be out, ready to be engaged citizens and participate in what is going to be a really tough, tough world for a while? Okay, we're, we're in a really ugly soap right now, and it is not going to be an easy step for a lot of these kids. They're, they're going to have to be able to get out there and take a lot of hardship. And so my hope would be that with the academics, at least with the math and the science and the English, that these things are really focused on, because that's going to be, their education is going to be one of the most powerful tools they can have, going out into this more difficult future that they're going to have. It's, it's an honest, we have to look at it honestly, at what they're looking at. So I would ask that, that really not let the main focus fly by the wayside in the interest of the other things you're trying to do. And the last thing would be just the respect for students, it didn't appear through the demonstration that kids understood how to talk to each other very well, or how to communicate with each other. And then that's a big issue that's been happening across the board since COVID. You know, we took away a year and a half of their normal life, and a lot of kids are having trouble talking to each other, communicating with each other, understanding that people have different ideas, but that's okay, you can listen to each other and communicate those ideas, and still walk away with respect for each other. You know, I would have loved to see, when you get word of something like that happening, how about you, you teach the kids where their legislatures are, and, and teach them that they can start a letter-writing campaign, or get an online, you know, forum together to, to contact the people who are the people who are actually in charge of those types of decisions. Teach them how to engage civically, because just having a protest at school where you don't make decisions on abortion here, so having a protest here is essentially a field day. It doesn't further any goal, and I wish those children would understand that, because they need to learn where their voices actually are heard and where they count. So those were just my few things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rizza.
Hey, good evening. Thank you all for tonight, for this discussion. I really appreciate, actually, the diversity of opinions that are being shared here today. I think this is the kind of conversation that we need to make the changes that we want to see. I had a chance to look over this policy.
Excuse me, sir, can you just state your name and municipality?
Sure, I'm sorry, my first board meeting. My name is Michael Lacire. I live in Flemington. I've been in Flemington for two years. I have a child in the high school. And I just want to thank the board for really, for this work. I think this is crucial. I'm a Jewish man. I think my religion was misrepresented when we say that we have two genders. I don't remember that from my study of the Bible, but what I do want to say is that we need this discussion, we need this to be going. I think there's enough here that we can all latch on to here, that the respect for everyone. And when we have a situation where people are historically disenfranchised, and we have an opportunity to right historical wrongs and teach our kids socio-emotional development along with the academics, is how we're going to have the communication that we want, the respect that we want, the success that we want for our students. And I think this is an impressive piece of work for me. I've been in the diversity, I'm a licensed psychologist, I've been in the diversity space for about 30 years, and this is really thorough and impressive. I'm sure the more information would be helpful to everyone, but the respect for everyone, you know, whether you're a Christian or white man, or, you know, like me, you know, everyone should be treated, everyone should have the equal shot. I think that's what we want for our kids, and if we can recognize right now that people don't have an equal shot, and we can address the inequities, that's the best thing that we can do for our kids. And I think I'll stop talking and put my name on here, and I just thank you all, thank you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Rizza.
All right.
So with that, we will conclude our second residence forum and move into board comments. Does anybody have any comments?
Just have a brief comment. I appreciate the person who just spoke, sort of, you know, backing up that experience of Judaism, because while I'm not Jewish, I did grow up in a Jewish community. And then just looking briefly online, I find things like what the Torah teaches us about gender fluidity and transgender justice. So I think it's important to categorize something accurately, because that's what we're looking to do with this policy. We're looking to be inclusive. There's nothing about this that we've gotten feedback on that is harmful to anyone or is imposing on anyone. This is about including as many people as we can, and that was really the goal of having students work on this policy, because they know better than us, and teachers and staff as well. And then I just wanted to say, you know, I didn't know that much to my, I'm not happy to say, I didn't know that much about Matthew Shepard, and having looked it up briefly, my kids could happily learn about that for three months. If anyone suffered the way that that person did, I think that's not a waste of time, three months, for somebody who endured what they did because of their sexuality. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Share a thought. I just want to thank everybody for constructive comments tonight, and invitations to think together, invitations to work together on next steps forward. And I appreciate that tonight. I appreciate that tonight quite a bit. Now, as far as the policy goes, I'll share a preface, and then I think I've taken a lot of notes, and I think I want to reach out to some folks after the meeting to connect on some of the ideas you've shared. We saw two interesting things on the agenda tonight with two different kinds of policies. Our HIB policy was on the agenda tonight, and the HIB policy is unique, because it, from the board level, specifies every single action that the district is supposed to take one step after another. And a policy like this, 8100, is existing at a different kind of altitude, where it's proposing structures of belief, kinds of action, and now the job before us, and I'm much more excited about the job in a policy like 8100, is that the school, as this policy moves through its approval process, the school will have to work with the community and with its students and with the board in an ongoing dialogue to define a lot of these things, to specify the goals, to determine what are the most appropriate metrics for this, to determine success. So this is policy at a different kind, in a different kind of flavor than what we typically see in a policy, say, like our HIB policy. So this does not prescribe all of the specific moves for us, but it invites, like I heard from a lot of comments tonight, it invites further discussion, further development, you know, regulation development, project development, program development, as we do work that will never be done. And that's the other truth of a policy like this, is that it sets out an agenda that we will never see the end of. There will always be room to improve and always efforts to take to enhance belonging and inclusion in our community. So I appreciate all that we've heard tonight. I've taken some notes, and I know Mrs. Hughes has as well, so I look forward to reaching back out to some of the folks who spoke tonight, and as we move forward together, continuing to talk about this policy and then implementing it, hopefully, as we move into next year. I'm looking forward to a lot of robust conversations about the details of that, the measurements of that. So I appreciate everything tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. One comment I would just like to make in response to the question about whether any HIBs came out of the May 16 investigation. We can't speak to that, okay? So we can't talk about whether HIBs came out of it. What I can say is, the investigation was viewed through the lens of our HIB policy and our discipline policy, and if there was a need for investigations along those lines, those investigations were opened and happened. So that's, I just want to make sure we responded to that question that was expressly asked by one of the speakers.
I may?
Yeah, of course.
I just wanted to echo two things I heard today, tonight during public comment. First, again, I can only speak for myself, but I feel comfortable that others at this table will agree with me, safety is paramount, the student's safety at this institution. You don't go anywhere, you don't grow, you don't learn if you don't feel safe. And so I certainly take responsibility in making sure that everyone is safe or feels safe, and we try to address things, if it's brought to our attention, where they don't feel safe. And second, to culture, being a Central alumni, I can say, I feel proud that this school prepares you as a student for the real world. You learn to find your place, you've learned to navigate the waves of the world, but the culture of this school, in my personal belief, does get planted at this table by the policies that we make, and I certainly think about that in all the actions that I take as a board member, and I would hope that the rest of my members here at the table would feel the same, because that's where things start, is policy. Unfortunately, we can't affect every single student directly, but we can plant the seed of what we intend for this institution, and then have staff and administration execute that and see the results through all of our students and all of their successes, including the ones we saw with the athletics and others we have seen throughout the year in academics. So again, thank you all for commentary, for coming to these meetings and sharing. It helps us to think, consider, and move forward for this institution's future.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. Anyone else? Dr. Moore? No? Okay. So with that, we will move into executive session to discuss personnel, legal matters, and HIBs. Can I have a motion to move into exec? Oh, and I'm sorry, negotiations as well. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion in a second? Any discussion? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
There will be no action upon return.